Commissioner there, I don't know if you would like to kick us off in Commissioner until Commissioner Devon is able to join the call or if you'd prefer that we hold for a few more minutes. I'll defer to you on on kind of how you'd like to proceed there.
Oh, no, Whitney, that sounds fine.
Okay, Doug, why don't you go ahead and lead us off with an update? I don't think we have any changes within this week's bill report, but just looking to you for an update on what's happening in Salem.
Okay, well, I'm sure, well, I don't know if you all are aware or not, but the Republicans did go back on the floor yesterday. And they are, um, we're going to have some, a lot of bipartisan, probably around the clock work for the next, the next few days, and I'm sure Doug's gonna want to tell us what, because he's right in the heart of the beast. I was there Monday morning talking to Senator Steiner over our courthouse ask. And I was so very fortunate to get to talk with her walking down the hallway from her ways it means. So it was a really good conversation and I'm only hoping for the best for our funding. So we'll see what happens there. I know we probably still have to wait a few days as Doug is telling me patience is a virtue. So anyway, I don't think I have any, but I'm, I'm trying. So thank you, thank you all for joining us and Doug, do you want to update us? I see you're in your vehicle.
Yeah, Commissioner and Commissioner Chang and staff, thanks. I am in the car headed to Salem for something that until yesterday hadn't happened in forty seven days, which was a Senate floor session. Uh, as Commissioner Dara mentioned, there was an agreement reached Wednesday night codified yesterday morning. Uh, the, the two major sticking points were House Bill two thousand two and House Bill two thousand five. That's the abortion gender bill and the gun bill. There were amendments made in very rapid fashion in the Senate Rules Committee yesterday with no discussion. Uh, adopted by the committee, sent to the, the Senate floor and adopted with no debates on the Senate floor yesterday. And that really, that and a couple of other things have paved the way for both parties to reach agreement and move ahead with the session. Uh, that includes an agreement to pass all of the bills with the exception of one or two, uh, but almost all the bills uh, on the Senate docket on the first reading, second reading and third reading lists. And that's close to three hundred bills that have been stacked up. Um, in addition, uh, there are some budget bills that will come out of the Ways and Means Committee in the next few days. Probably on Tuesday morning, uh, those bills will, will entail all the capital construction and bonding issues. So the courthouse funding conceivably would be in that bill. That would be House Bill fifty thirty. No one has seen that bill, no one knows what's in the bill. Uh, but, um, so far I've, I've gotten positive responses as Commissioner Dara mentioned from, from the chairs of the committee. Construction, especially courthouses continues to be a priority for the legislature. Um, the other bill that will come out will be the end of session or Christmas tree bill. Um, I'm expecting that to be a, a much larger package than has typically been the case in, uh, in the state. Most of the state agency budgets were drafted before the revenue forecast. Uh, I think most, uh, leadership and Ways and Means members were expecting the revenue forecast to be down. Uh, instead it was up dramatically, uh, you know, far greater than anyone could possibly have predicted. So that gives the state quite a bit more money to be able to, to use for things. It also meant a larger corporate kicker. And what that did was that freed up other state general fund revenues, uh, because the corporate kicker by the, um, will of the voters goes directly to K through twelve. So K through twelve got quite a large bump, uh, without having to dip into the general fund as much as they might otherwise have had to, to keep it at the levels that, that folks wanted. So corporate kicker was up one twenty eight billion dollars. That all goes into the K through twelve, uh, budget, and that probably will free up some money for things like behavioral health. And so we're expecting, you know, at least the fifty million dollar bump in the behavioral health funding. Other than, or on top of what was included, the O H J budget here, uh, a few weeks ago that came out of committee. So, um, optimistic that we'll probably get to final signee die. I would say next Thursday, uh, the Senate meets this morning nine until noon or one o'clock. They plowed through about twenty five or thirty bills yesterday. They got another twenty five or thirty up today and they'll go to, uh, twelve hours a day sessions on Tuesday, Wednesday, and possibly into Thursday until they get, uh, things completed. So, um, pretty optimistic that they're gonna be able to resolve things, pass all the all the policy bills by Thursday. Sorry, I was to pull myself on mute because an ambulance was driving by me. So, uh, so I think that's, that's really all I've been in, you know, pretty regular communication with our delegation. They've been keeping us up to date as much as they can. You know, there are some other issues that we talked about earlier in the session that did not make it. House Bill thirty one twenty six is one of the issues that we discussed. That was the bill, uh, Representative Sanchez that would have created regional centers, uh, trauma centers for high-risk equity youth in hospital emergency rooms. You know, yeah, it was baffling to me that Ways and Means Committee couldn't find the eleven million dollars to support that bill. Funding for homeless youth is expected to be bumped up a little bit in the final budget. Uh, that certainly will help our regional partners. Housing and homelessness funding, I would expect to get a fairly significant bump in the Christmas tree bill. And then in the capital construction bill, I'm, I'm really hoping that the Ways and Means Committee recognizes the need to pay for infrastructure for things like, um, economic development and housing. You know, numbers of our regional cities have, uh, housing infrastructure requests, ban Redmond Sisters, et cetera. And then infrastructure, uh, for things like, uh, uh, out of the airport in Redmond, et cetera. So, uh, and then the other thing I'd expect to get a bump in the Christmas tree bill would be the public, public defenders budget. That was woefully underfunded in the DOJ budget, uh, earlier this, this, uh, this session last month. Um, I think everyone expects that we'll see a bump in, in those funds. And then finally, public health is something I wanted to mention, uh, public health budget again took a huge cut in the O H A, initial O H A budget. The coalition's been working extensively to try to convince the Ways and Means Committee that public health is worth, you know, more than a tiny little investment. We need to, you know, continue with the modernization program. So I'm very hopeful that, uh, we'll see a bump in the public health budget. So we shall see, everything is tight lipped and probably will be until an hour or so before the work sessions on what, what I would expect to be Tuesday morning at eight, uh, for capital construction and nine thirty for the full committee on Tuesday morning. Uh, Monday is Juneteenth, so they won't be in session on Monday. So I'll stop there and, and take any questions. And I, I think that we may have Rep Levy and maybe others joining us at eight fifteen.
Okay, so it is eight twelve. Whitney, is anybody on yet?
I'd like to ask Doug a question before we move on, if that's all right. Doug, um, so you, you mentioned House Bill thirty one twenty six not getting to the finish line. And I believe you also said that the majority of the bills that are all, um, stacked up in Salem will get processed before the end of this, you know, the, before the very near end of this session. Uh, the, and so I'm trying to put those two things together. So, so basically everything is going to get, uh, is, is going to get through the process. But there are some things that there just won't be money for. Is that, is that, how do, is that how I reconcile those two pieces of information?
Yeah, good, good question, Commissioner, and I, I probably wasn't very clear about that. The, uh, I, I think that all of the bills that have advanced to the Senate floor from committee are probably going to be, uh, acted upon or what will be taken on those bills. So that, that was about three hundred and two bills that have been stacked up and becoming more and more stacked up on the Senate floor. So I think those bills are almost all likely to move. There are two or three exceptions. There was a, a referral S J R thirty three, which would have referred, uh, to the voters, a constitutional amendment on, uh, abortion access. Uh, that will not, uh, move forward, but let's say two hundred and ninety six of the three oh two will probably move the Senate floor. There are several hundred more bills that are, um, in committee, especially the Ways and Means Committee that will probably not move at all, and thirty one twenty six is one of those. So any bill that hasn't moved that Always Means so far is unlikely to do so, except for the Christmas tree bill and the bonding bill. But all the bills that have already advanced are likely to move. So that's a confusing way to put it, but I hope that makes more sense.
I think I got it now, thank you.
Oh, um, Doug, I hadn't heard back from anyone regarding, I think it's House Bill three zero zero three. Is that it, the biomass bill in that drought package? Do you know where, have you heard anything about that?
Yeah, that continues to be something that we've been pushing. That's the, that's the tax credit that would make the water restoration, Jennifer management provision sustainable over the long term. I don't think that's going to make it out of the joint committee and tax expenditure. So I think that bill is dead for now, but, uh, I have heard from the chair that she is interested in digging into it more during the interim and possibly coming back in, in the short session with consideration of something like that. A lot of the tax credit bills, uh, have failed to get across the finish line. And even important things like renewal of the enterprise zone, the R and D tax credit, uh, this, the strategic investment program, the gain share program. Those are, those economic development packages that cities and counties use for economic development. Those are still up in the air as well. Uh, the Joint Committee on Tax Expenditures has a dash thirteen amendment now on those provisions. We're hoping that maybe they're considered on Tuesday, but that's awfully close to the end of the session to be able to get, you know, some fairly important things like the enterprise zone provisions renewed. And I, I do, I do see that we've got Rep Craft and maybe Rep Levy. So maybe we could, Commissioner, we could turn to them for a quick update and, and then come back for any last minute bill updates at the end.
Yeah, I do have one more question about water when we come back. So, um, I've got a quote from a Rep Owens, and I just wanted you to tell me what to do with it. Okay, so, um, Rep Craft, is he on?
Yeah, I mean, Commissioner, go ahead and ask that question of Doug. I mean, I'd be curious as well.
Okay, well, originally, you know, a year ago, um, we had an emergency allocation, I think to Shute's kind of got five hundred and eighty five thousand four wells that had gone down. And so, uh, Rep Helms had asked me a while ago, I did research and gave him the number one point five million for that funding program. And this is what Rep Owen said happened this time. The statewide abandonment and repair program was included in the drought package and additional funding put into it. It's mainly used for dry wells, but there was no individual county allocation for dry wells. So I'm just wondering, how do we get our residents that need help that funding? Because last time we, the funding was sent to the county, the county sent it to Neighbor Impact and they handled the program. And we did loans and, um, and funding for some people.
Yeah, Commissioner, that's a very good question. I looked at the bill as well and I, I concluded the same thing that Representative Owens did. Um, I also know that the, um, the water folks in the building have been asking for additional funding in the Christmas tree bill. So it's possible that that individual allocation could be bumped up. But I would assume based on the wording of the bill, the brow package, that that would be a departmental decision on how to allocate the funding. If that's the case, they typically look to pass precedent. So if, if the county's got a specific allocation, I would expect that they would continue that, uh, kind of allocation by county. But I'll bird dog of that and get back to you as soon as I can.
Okay, thank you.
Doug, and, and for the rest of us, um, A O C, uh, in the middle of this drought package process was soliciting from, uh, counties, essentially what their, what, what everyone's need was for, uh, well, deepening funds. And they put together like a comprehensive bundle of information for all of the counties in, in the state. Uh, so I would suggest we should be pursuing this through A O C if we want to essentially get uh, Water Resources Department to, to break down that number and start to put, uh, dollars in buckets for specific counties.
Yeah, that sounds good. I, I probably will see Brandon in the Capitol today. I'll chat with them about that. Good point.
Well, okay. Uh, Representative Craft, do you want, do you want to update us with where we're at?
Well, I mean, I'm not sure I have that much to add from Doug, right? Things have started moving. Uh, again, we are, um, admittedly, we're caught up on the House side. I have to, I'm gonna be in Salem for a little bit this afternoon, but we haven't had floor the last two days just because we are ahead, um, the Senate's behind. So, um, we're watching, see all the, the bills in the Senate, make sure those get through. Um, we go back on Tuesday. And try to get through as much as possible. I think Doug kind of covered out some of the budget stuff, most of the bills. The Ways and Mean, my understanding, the Ways and Means bills are out of that committee already. There's still some capital construction stuff left to be done. And then we're all waiting to see what's fully covered in the Christmas tree bill. Um, drought package being one of those, right? We voted on the drought package. Um, on Wednesday, um, potentially some more funding coming through that in the, in the, in the session bill. I think Rep Owens described it as a down payment on our, on our, on our water needs, um, throughout the state. So, um, yeah, there's gonna be a flurry of activity next week. I, I don't know, Doug, I think you, I heard you say that you were saying people are thinking we're gonna get out of the building on Thursday. Is that what you said?
Yeah, that's kind of the calculation there that the, uh, the semi-educated guesstimate from a group of folks that we were talking to your legislators yesterday, that it would take, you know, probably, and the Senate's going twelve hours today, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday. So that, that they're gonna have some long floor sessions, but they, they moved quickly through things yesterday that with almost no debate on those bills. So they have the capacity to do things quickly, but just the paperwork for capital construction and the Christmas tree bill, you know, usually takes, yeah, usually is about three days after, uh, those bills initially come out and are voted on in the committee, then it, it takes to give them to the House, to the Senate. All the details worked out, et cetera. And so we're guessing through.
No, I could, that, that makes some sense. We're, we're told to be prepared to be there through Sunday, just in case, but so. Happy to take any questions. There's been, well, there's just been a flurry of activity the last few days.
I'll just say really quickly that as long as we're out before the twenty fifth and we're not back in session in July, I'll be a happy, happy guy.
Well, we wouldn't want, Holly, you have a question?
Oh, sorry. Yeah, I just, I'm sorry to sound like a broken record, but I'm just curious if there's been any more discussion on impacts funding um, for the Christmas tree bill at all, if there's anybody even talking about it, uh, besides us.
So, and Holly, I feel like I had that conversation with Ken at the C J C. So people are, well, people are still optimistic about funding for impact grants. There's also an understanding that, um, potentially it could be this time or next time in February, just because of the length of the contract. So if it's not, if it's not now, that doesn't necessarily mean it's not gonna happen. And I, and I, I've had conversations with multiple people from different parts of the state that hold up our navigation center as a model of what should be happening in other communities. So, um, yeah, we'll keep pushing on that. But if you don't see it this time, that does not mean it's not gonna happen before those contracts run out. I admit it, I, my guess is you'd rather see that money now than February or March of twenty four.
That'd be nice, but I will take it any way we can get it, but thank you for taking the update.
Yeah, if I could just make one point, which is a kind of an interesting data point that I saw this morning, which is uh, unemployment for Oregon in May ticked down to three point seven percent. So down another two tenths of one percent. What does that indicate? That indicates that the, uh, the number of taxpayers paying taxes into the state budget continues to grow. And so I had a Ways and Means staffer tell me yesterday that they expect that based on that, as long as the July forecast uh, or the July numbers are, are, are tracking in that same direction, that the E board will end up with additional funds to be able to allocate for programs like impacts and other things, hopefully that, uh, don't get funded at full level immediately. So that's kind of encouraging.
Yes, they should be getting another, uh, what, money from people with their quarterlies this month, so. For all the people that are so fortunate to make quarterly tax payments. Um, anything else, Jason?
No, I mean, I think we're, we're optimistic about some of our, our funding requests for the, for the community, be it the courthouse or, um, out on bridge. So we're still sort of waiting on what some of those, um, some of that funding is gonna look like. So I would all, next week, it's been a, um, I would say an unusual process, but that's only my filter. I haven't been through a walkout before, but the reality of this is not necessarily been unusual. It just happened to be the longest and most protracted. So I am pleased that we are getting back to work. I'm not pleased in the manner in which it happened.
Okay. Thank you so much for those comments. Is, is, um, Rep, um, Levy in?
Yep, she's there.
Okay, great. Rep Levy, are you accessible to, um, speaking?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
Thanks, sorry, um, I just dropped off my daughter for last day of school, so I am in my car. Um, so yeah, just adding to that, I, I missed the first little bit, so I'm not sure. Um, if the money that is earmarked for the navigation center in the housing budget was mentioned. So that will be good sustained funding for the navigation center. Um, we have, uh, we're, once it passes the Senate, we have money for Alyssa's Law, which is the, the school safety bill that I've been working on. Uh, due to the unusual nature of this session, I was only, I was able to put it in a budget note. So the policy hasn't passed, but the money is there, and I think the money is the most important part. Um, and we were able to secure money for, I was talking to Doug this morning for J Bar J for youth homelessness, a pretty significant, I believe it's one point four million. Uh, and so that will add it if, if, uh, if plans go as, uh, projected about fifteen beds for youth homelessness in Redmond. So that's pretty significant. And I'm happy to take questions and I'm continuing to talk to the governor's office about the Gail's property. Things are a little bit crazy right now, and so they'll probably be more effective July conversation, um, just with all the things that are moving, um, right now.
Oh, uh, Rep Levy, how much is funding for the navigation center?
Let me pull it up, I have it in text. I want to say it's like one point five, let me, let me pull it up really fast.
We're talking millions, I take it?
Yeah. Let me just pull it up. All right, so navigation, one point, uh, one million, five hundred and thirteen dollars. And then the city of Ben homeless shelters, six hundred and thirty thousand. I need to go through this whole thing. Um, but this is all buried within the housing budget. And then there's also money for new shelters. And we'll just have to figure out through DAS, uh, there's just a lot of money available in the housing package and just how the, how we best apply for it and, and, um, get money for the county. Um, but there's, there's, it's a pretty substantial, um, investment in housing. I believe the total is six hundred million.
And, and this is, the, these investments are in addition to the governor's, uh, emergency order, uh, package that came through earlier.
Yes, separate. This is the housing budget, O C H, O C H S.
Great.
And we were just briefed on it yesterday, so I'm still asking questions and digging through. Um, a lot of the money is, uh, some programs to apply for and things like that. But it is, it is the largest housing investment in the state's history.
And, and
I will say, I'd love, like to see more attention on middle income housing and infrastructure funds. Um, but that's just a continued conversation.
Will this be eligible for, uh, middle income? Because I do have a project in Redmond that they want to do something for, you know, workforce housing. Is, will it be eligible or not?
There is money for middle housing, I just wish there was more.
Okay, there is. Okay, good, good. Thank you. Go ahead, Commissioner Chang.
Yeah, and, um, uh, I, either Representative Levy or Representative Crop. We heard very briefly today that there would be courthouse funding, uh, that in, in the final package. And, um, but, you know, we, we didn't hear any, you know, dollar estimates and, and there wasn't, uh, we didn't get all the background on kind of how that happened. Um, and I, I was, I was speaking with Emerson a little bit yesterday and, and would love to hear a little bit more background. And if you have any sense of order of magnitude, um, it'd be great to know that as well.
I think we're
Go ahead, Jason.
No, I mean, I think the short answer, Representative, um, Commissioner Chang, is we're waiting what those final numbers look like. So, um, and that is like one of, I don't know, hundreds of projects where everybody's waiting to see what the final numbers are. People are, you know, like I said, I think someone's gonna come through on that. I couldn't tell you what the dollar figure is right now.
Thank you.
I think you'll be happy. But I don't know the number.
Great. And, and could you tell us a little, um, so Representative Levy, you mentioned, you know, the, the governor's personal involvement in, in making that happen. I, I, I would just, uh, it would be helpful to know who else we should, who we should be thanking.
Well, I think we have a strong Central Oregon coalition, you know, Senator Knope played a big role in that. And, uh, you know, every person who represents Central Oregon, we all put in together on all of our ask. Um, and you don't always see that, um, that everyone, we were all, um, in lock and step with the projects that we wanted. So I think it was just a lot of teamwork. Um, and, um, and I also think Senator Knope.
Thank you.
Yeah, I will echo what Rep Levy just said, which is the delegation has really worked closely together. Um, you know, I've been in touch with them all every week and there's a lot of communication back and forth. Uh, even the legislators that are just touching the edge of central Oregon, like Representative Greg Smith, uh, Representative Fresky, who's got Southern Neshu's County, you know, they've all been working together on prior to these projects. Whether it be infrastructure, housing, courthouse, homeless funding, uh, core three, et cetera. There's been a lot of communication that's been really, uh, fantastic group to work with this session. And I really appreciate that, that two who are on the call today for just being super helpful and always have been having an open door.
Um, Jason?
Yeah, no, and I, and I, you know, Doug played a big role in that and helping, keeping us coordinated. I will say this, yeah, we do, um, I think the various people who represent Neshu's County, we work well together on, on the things that we work on together. And, you know, we tried our hardest to elevate some of the funding needs of our regions. And, you know, we tried our hardest to elevate some of the funding needs of our regions. I don't want anybody to leave this saying that I have a. At times we have a working relationship, I don't want anybody to leave this meeting thinking I I find it acceptable, the behavior of the Republicans who walked out the last month and a half. So there is, there is an end result that I think is gonna be. Positive, there's a number of things that aren't gonna get done that I think I'm gonna be incredibly disappointed in and I don't want anybody on this call to think that that I. Think the mechanism where we landed here in this place is acceptable or something that should continue in the future.
Okay, I see we have our our treasurer on, Bill Kuhn. Bill, are there any comments you wanted to make today, this morning?
No, that, I think the. That all sounds good, very positive and certainly looking forward to seeing some results, some approved bills, but sounds like they've got some work to do and. Little bit of catching up, but sounds very favorable.
I apologize, I have another meeting I gotta get to, so I'm. Happy to give people an update next week as we sort of know more about all these different funding pieces and happy to make myself available. Well, next week's gonna be the week, the following week I'm gonna be unavailable, so just let people know what they need from me.
Okay, we're talking the 23rd then? All right, you are available on the 23rd, thank you, thank you, Representative Crop.
Yeah, 23rd Fri. Yep, I'm available on the 23rd.
Okay, great.
Thank you so much, Jason.
Yep.
All righty. Whitney, do you see any of the raised hands in our group?
I don't, I'll just give folks one more minute to do that if they have any updates or questions they'd like to ask.
Oh, I do have a question, you mentioned Representative Greg Smith. He isn't in Deschutes County at all, is he? We have, we have seven reps.
He comes into Madras and Wright Porter's right up against Deschutes County. And and he's the vice chair of the Ways and Means Committee and. So I've taken all of our Deschutes County asks to him and he's been. Helpful in giving us some inside information and urging the co-chairs to move in the right direction, so. I I think Greg is the senior Republican on the committee, views himself as kind of working for all of rural Oregon. So he's been a strong supporter and and able to help time to time.
I will echo that, he's been very helpful to me behind the scenes on on projects and, you know, how how to get them funded.
Great, because I I think he covers Hepner, maybe not anymore, but.
He does, yeah, he does.
My hometown, I'm like, okay. All right, sounds, that's great, thank you, thank you, Rep Levy, for those comments, that's great, and any, anything else?
Patty, I'll just mention that he said Greg Smith is also kind of a an occasional resident of Deschutes County because he has a place in Sun River and he frequently on Friday afternoon when I'm meeting with him says, I gotta leave, my wife wants me. It's Sun River, I gotta be there, so that's, he's kind of a, he's an occasional constituent.
Maybe his place is by Governor Brown's. We'll have to, we'll have to find out. It could be neighbors in Sun River. Any other raised hands anywhere, Whitney?
No, I think we're good for today.
Okay, thank you all for joining us, have a have a lovely safe weekend.
Thank you all.
Everyone.
Thank you.